Good evening and welcome to this town meeting called Building Community. I'm Roberta Holloman, a member of the Five Cs. The Five Cs, which stands for the Citizens of Cupertino Cross-Cultural Consortium, is a group of, as you may have guessed, citizens of Cupertino. And we come from various cultural backgrounds. The group first formed three years ago at a training and team-building meeting for leaders in Cupertino. That two-day meeting produced many ideas for how to make our community more cohesive, but it was obvious that there needed to be some mechanism for making these things happen. Some of the participants volunteered to be a steering committee to see that these ideas were implemented. The group met and started to work. The first thing we did was to create a name and adopt a mission statement. Our mission statement is to create an infrastructure that promotes a harmonious yet diverse community. And we tackled the tasks. I will be talking about our projects later in this program. First, we're going to have a welcome from our mayor, Wally Dean, and then our city manager, Don Brown, will address you, followed by Sean Spano of the Public Dialogue Consortium, who will explain the activities for tonight. So, let's get started.
Welcome, welcome. This is an event that we've planned for a long, long time. And I'd like to introduce some of the participants who are the focal points of the idea, starting with vice mayor. Where's John? John Statton, as of next Wednesday, will become the new mayor. His vice mayor will be the lovely, vivacious Sandra James. Tinker Bell, where's Tinker Bell? Where's Tinker Bell? On board is Dr. Michael Chang. Michael? Is Don Burnett here. I haven't seen him walking around. And then the gentleman taking my spot, starting from Wednesday on, is Richard. Where are you, Richard? The purpose of this event was to create a communication mechanism, to share some ideas, maybe not disagreeing, but sharing some ideas and maybe having a time to just listen. May hear something new, maybe have a different perspective of it, and that's all we're looking for. We think it's something creative. We think it's a challenge to all of you. Please just take the time and energy to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Wally, and thanks for eight great years on the city council. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. Good turnout. And I know how busy everybody is, so it's really appreciated, and it just shows how people care about Cupertino. I want to just talk a little bit about a couple of things we've been doing in Cupertino before I turn it over to Sean and the other speakers. Just to review, this is a community of 50,000 people now with the annexation of Rancho Rinconada, so we're in the big time. We're smack dab in the Silicon Valley. High-tech, high-income, high-education, high involvement. We have seen a dramatic demographic change in the past 15 to 20 years in Cupertino. Thirty percent or more, we'll find out in the 2000 census, of our population are non-native, newcomers to our country and our community. Cupertino, as you all know, has a strong history of community involvement. This is a great community because people are involved. Our challenge, then, the council has given us all this challenge, with these dramatic changes, how do we keep that strong sense of community? How do we keep us all together as a community? Well, we came up with something we call the Neighborhood Approach. Next to families, the basic unit of communities is neighborhoods, right? That's where people see each other. They run across each other. They wave at each other. Hopefully, they talk to each other. The idea is, if you get neighbors together for any reason, you will build a stronger community. So what are the elements of this approach that we've taken? Well, there's four main ones that we discovered, and there's one sort of unexpected one. The first one is something we call Emergency Preparedness Training. And sitting right over at this table is Marie Moore, the person that runs this program. Marie, just stand up for a second. There she is. Over 300 residents of Cupertino have gone through a 20-hour set of training on how to be able to be self-sustaining during the first 72 hours of disaster. And for that, for us, that usually means earthquake, right? Could mean Y2K. These 300 residents not only went through that training, they got to know each other better, right? That was a spin-off. Second thing we've done, we've enhanced our Neighborhood Watch Program. Steve Angus, where are you? Way in the back. Over the past year, Steve and other deputies have done more than 30 presentations to neighborhoods, businesses, and that's all about prevention of crime and looking out for each other in your neighborhoods. Number three, everybody likes a party, right? So we have developed a smooth, streamlined process for holding block parties. In 1997, there was one block party in this whole community that we knew about. In 1998, '99, there were 18 block parties. Why is that? Well, through the leadership of the Five Cs Committee, Roberta Holloman and others, they said, "We need to make it easier for people to have block parties." So the city and others working on a committee developed a block-party kit, made it simple, follow simple rules and guidelines. The city will bring out the barricades. The city will pay for the liability insurance, so your neighbors won't have to worry about someone tripping and falling and getting hurt. We will provide you recreation leaders at your block party to help your kids have games together. And we'll send the fire district with fire trucks and the sheriff with sheriff vehicles so you can see the bells and whistles. So that's something we did. The other thing, the fourth thing, is called citywide garage sales. This year, we had six, over 600 residents sign up officially to be in our block, our citywide garage sale program. Now, I know many more were having garage sales that didn't sign up. That's fine. That's not a problem. This serves two things. It gets people together to walk around their neighborhoods and meet each other and say, "Hi, I'm so-and-so. I like your stuff." And the second thing it does is it reduces the amount of stuff that ends up in the landfill because, as we all know, one man's junk is another man's treasure, right? So it really does help with recycling. The thing that we did that was unexpected is we discovered, by holding all these events, that we were developing a group of neighborhood leaders, sort of accidentally, people that wanted to get involved, to develop their neighborhoods. And we've now have a database of over 1,300 people that we know have been involved in one of these neighborhood programs. One of the benefits of having that database is we sent all of you postcards in the mail because we have your address. Other possible future uses of this might be linking neighborhoods together, having neighborhood-to-neighborhood contacts, say, "How did, what worked in your neighborhood? This worked in mine. Try this out." So that's another idea. So these are some of the things that your community has been up to. And tonight, you will hear from a number of people from different walks of life, different experiences, and you will hear their own stories about our changing community and the effect these changes on their lives and their businesses. And to lead us through this evening's activities, I'd like to introduce to you Sean Spano from the Public Dialogue Consortium.
Thank you, Don. In your agenda, on the green folder, you'll see the activities that are planned out for us this evening. And we are now working, winding our way through the welcome and introductions, and we are just on the verge of starting with the first activity, which will be a group of presenters sitting up here in the front, who will talk about their experiences in Cupertino dealing with multiculturalism, how it has impacted their personal and professional lives. From there, we'll move into small group discussions. And you have facilitators at your table. These are Five Cs members, and we've been fortunate to have some students from Cupertino High who will also assist us in facilitating tonight. And they'll lead you through a series of questions where you'll have a chance to reflect on what you heard and how the experiences of these presenters match and don't match your own. From there, we'll move back up to the front of the room, and we'll hear from a number of presenters who are working on projects in Cupertino that are designed to enhance community, build community, and deal with the changing demographics in the community. We'll once again turn it back over to you and the small groups, and your facilitators will lead you through a discussion as you talk about the projects that are being conducted here and have a chance to evaluate how Cupertino is doing and also move us into next steps. What are we not doing and what still needs to be done? From there, we'll have a brief reporting out from each table, headlines coming out of that second group activity, and that'll wind up for our evening, this evening. What I would like to say is that that set of discussions coming out of the small group activities around the projects, your evaluations and your next steps, we're going to summarize that data that you're giving us tonight, and we're going to feed that back to you so that you're able to hear what others have said, and perhaps we can start talking concretely about next steps and developing projects in addition to what the Five Cs and some of the other groups are already doing. So let's get started. We have a wonderful group of presenters up here tonight who will each have an opportunity to share their experiences. We have Peter Powell, Steve Andrews, Donnis Chow, Dale Compton, Zara Pavlik, and Divya Talagia. And let's start with Peter.
I was just telling Steve that I got five minutes to prepare my speech, but not anymore. I'm probably one of the few people who don't live in Cupertino, so I'm actually very impressed. For those of you who actually live here, I must commend you for coming out here. I'm sure you have better things to do sometimes, but you chose to be here, and that showed that you really care, and there's a lot of courage and civic pride here. So I'm sure a lot of the issues exist in other parts of the communities, I mean, in the Bay Area, but most people chose not to talk about it. Or if they do talk about it, you know, it's not something that we could discuss openly in public. So, again, I'm very impressed. I actually came to one of these sessions a few years ago. As I recall, back then, I came away, had a very positive and upbeat experience, but I did feel like a party pooper at that point because I was there during the early days of Cupertino Village. And if you know what happened back then, it was supposed to be more or less like the evil empire. I remember people calling us a symbol of separatism. This is where a place where east and west don't not meet. So now that we have a few years behind us, I'd like to kind of maybe bring you up to date and see whether this initial perception were indeed true. Obviously, we have time to sort it out and find out whether this property, this so-called development, has indeed polarized the community and caused a lot of hurt feelings, or is it really goes to show that sometimes the only fear is the fear of the unknown. And once you know what's going to happen, you'll feel a lot better about it, and hopefully, I would like to let you know that is the case. You know, as developers, we always get bashed. We're always too greedy. We make winful profit. We always ask for more than what we need. We're never responsible, all that. So we're kind of used to it. So when we first started, it was somewhat shocking to me that there were a lot of negative vibes involved here. I've been, I don't grow up in this country, but I've been here for many years. I've been here for more than 20 years. And I've been very lucky because all these years I've here, I've never experienced any problem. I'm Oriental, but even during the years that I spent in Boise, Idaho, where it's 98% white, I never felt any uneasiness, and I don't feel like any place where I'm not accepted. So I certainly don't consider myself the type of people who are not open-minded. So when we first started, it was very disappointing that a lot of people feel very strongly about what we're doing, not in a good sense. And we got some bad publicity. But, you know, it's true that this is turning out the Asian center. I counted up, we have more than 40 tenants, and all but six or seven of them are Asian-owned. But this is really a marketing reality, really not a political statement we're trying to make here. We're not social engineers. We can't reform anything. But the important part is that as non-Asian customers, shoppers, even tenants, do you feel unwelcome? Do you feel uncomfortable if you visit the center? Now, we have other shopping centers that we own and manage, and I sometimes go around. I hate to admit this, but I'm, you know, middle-aged now, over 40 years old. So when I go to Old Navy store, I feel out of place. It feels awkward. But like I said, the important distinction is, do you feel unwelcome there? Do you feel like you don't belong there, that people don't want you there? I don't feel that feeling when I go to Old Navy. I don't even get the feeling when I go to Starbucks, which is basically 15-year-old kids and under these days. So I hope that that's the people, that's the feeling people come away with. I'm actually proud of Cupertino Village, not only because the way commercially it becomes more viable than before, but because I think we did it in a responsible way, in a sensitive way. We know that going in there, there's some concern, and we try to have heightened awareness of what we should do. There's only so much we can do, but a few things that we can do, like business lines, making sure the employees in each store do speak English, keeping the place nice and clean, keeping the store variety somewhat interesting so people can all come and hopefully have a good time there. We do have one problem in the last few years. It was brought to my attention that one so-called non-Asian customer had a bad experience wanting to his store. We never found that was true or not, but I was very PO, let's put it this way. And we actually sent out notice to every single tenant out there and told them not only is it unlawful, but it's absolutely stupid practice. And if we ever caught anybody doing that, we're just terminating the lease because this is not the thing, that message you want to send out to the community. We have actually developed the other parts of the center as well. You probably noticed apartment has been built and hotel has been built. And I don't think my shopping center component should be any different. My shopping center, just like the hotel and the apartment, should be a place where anybody is open to everyone, and anybody's welcome. Now, you may or may not like the shops there, may not like the restaurants there, you may not care to spend too much time there, but that's okay. But the main thing is, nobody should be excluded. If we have, you know, if we, if anybody have that feeling in the community, then we have failed, and we need to do better. And so, in a way, I'm kind of glad to be here because I'd like to know from you, anybody who has any experience over there, what's good or bad, because sometimes we, as not absentee only, but I don't live here, I will know everything that's going on. We also have our manager, Rose, here, and she would be interested to find out from you whether there's any comments, suggestions, we can make this place a better place, a more welcome place, because it is called Cupertino Village. So we certainly don't want Cupertino name to be mud here. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm grateful to have the chance to talk to you because we have nothing that we feel like we're part of community in any event. So this is a great opportunity for us to get together.
Thank you, Peter. We'll just work down the list, and that means Steve Andrews is up next.
Thank you, Sean. Well, like Peter, I come from a retail background, and one thing about the retail market is it doesn't have any eyes. It's a great equalizer. It only cares, it doesn't care about where you're from or who you are. It only cares about what you want. And if you can deliver the goods and services that people want, you're going to be successful. It's pretty simple. And I think Peter's shopping center is successful. I know that my quarters has been very successful. If you shop at our store, you'll see a total cross-section of the community shopping there because we have the things that they want. Same thing with Long's, Mervyn's, stores like that. So from a retail standpoint, this influx of people into the community has been very good, as any good consumers, increase in consumers is good for the retail business. So from that standpoint, it's been really great. I was also asked to talk a little bit about my personal, personal story. I'd like to touch that by going back to 1946, when we moved here from San Francisco, and we bought an orchard on Oak Avenue, which is right near Mountain View High School. Well, at that time, our neighbors were all either Yugoslavian or Italians because they were the farmers. Then you had the Andrews. And we were kind of the newcomers, so we had to kind of fit in. And we moved into the area and tried to learn a little bit about farming and got to feel uncomfortable. And about the time we got to feeling comfortable and getting friendly with our neighbors and learning a little bit about raising walnuts and cherries, a whole herd of folks started coming from out of state, immigrants from places like New York and Chicago and the South, Georgia. And these folks talked funny, you know? They really, you couldn't understand these guys. Their southern draws would put you to sleep, and New York accents would break your mirrors. But these folks are coming in, and there wasn't a heck of a lot we could do about it. We tried to ignore them as best we could, but that didn't last too long. And pretty soon, this guy from PG&E showed up at our house, and he said, "You know, we got all these folks coming in from out of state." My dad says, "Yeah, I know that." He says, "We need more electricity." I says, "Well, that's okay." He says, "But we need to put a couple PG&E towers on your property." My dad says, "But we don't want PG&E towers." And the guy says, "Don't worry. We'll give you a fair price." And so we got some PG&E towers in place of our walnut trees. And we got over that and went on a little while longer, and about two, three years later, who should come along but the water company? And my dad kind of rolls his eyes, and he says, the guy says, "The water company says, 'You know, we got some more folks moving in from out of state. Whole herd of folks from Minnesota just showed up yesterday.'" My dad says, "Oh, boy." And he says, "They need water, and we got to have a place to put that water." My dad says, "Yeah." He says, "We need to put a water tank on your property." My dad says, "But we got cherry trees there." Says, "Well, we'll give you a good price." And so pretty soon, we had a water tank on our property. We were feeling kind of picked on. And who should come along? About 1958, but a guy from the highway department. And he says, "You know, there's an awful lot of folks." And my dad said, "Yeah, I know, an awful lot of folks moving in here from out of state." And he says, "Yeah." And the guy says, "Well, we got to build this freeway. And we're going to build this freeway from Moffett Field all the way around the west side of the valley here and come out at that new plant out there by IBM, I think it's called." My dad said, "Well, that's nice." And he said, "And we need your property for that." So they took the whole thing, and that was the end of our farming here in the Santa Clara Valley. And all these folks came in, and they didn't want to just be building homes and stuff. They wanted to get involved in everything. And pretty soon, they started getting involved in our politics, in our schools, about everything we did. And they kind of started telling us what to do. Of course, we didn't like that. We wanted things just the way they were. So they got us more involved. And we started saying, "No, you know, we were the guys that saying, 'Leave it the way it is.'" There are the guys saying, "No, we got to change it. We need more schools." And we didn't get along very well. And in fact, we kind of ticked each other off, had a few rubs. But as we moved along, we began to realize that the only way, they were going to, they were here to stay. This is the way it was going to be. This valley was changing, and nobody was going to change it. So we decided we had to get along together, and we did. We started moving in the same direction, and you can see the valley that we have built now, where there used to be 250,000 people, living a really good quality life here. Now there's over 3 million, and they live a great life in a great high-tech area, highest incomes in the world, highest education rate, highest best medical care, best recreational facilities. How could you ask for a better place to live? And this all happened, not because we wanted it to, but because people wanted to move here for, any of this sound familiar to you guys? A little bit, like, maybe familiar? Okay. And, you know, when I hear people grumble now about things changing and folk, new folks moving in, I go, "What's the problem? This is the way this valley's always been. This whole valley is because of new folks." And these new folks have lived here 20, 30 years, and they consider themselves the salt of the earth. They're newcomers, those guys. What are they grumbling about? They're lucky we let them in. So anyway, we have new folks coming in. And they're not coming from the east anymore. They're coming from the west, the Pacific Rim companies, countries. And other than the fact that, you know, the obvious fact, they look a little different than us, they have at least five things in exact common with the folks that came here in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. Number one, they're well-educated. Number two, they have good family values. Number three, they practice law and order. Number four, they still kind of talk funny. We don't always understand them. But number five, they want to build a better life for themselves and their families. So what's the problem? I don't see a problem. I don't see why we can't work the same way that we did before, and we will. I mean, that's a foregone conclusion. We're going to do that. Now, the only thing I would say that worked in the past is that, yeah, these folks come up from out of state, came in here, and yeah, they got in our face and really upset us, but they worked in the community and became part of the community. So the only advice I'd give to our new neighbors is get as absolutely involved in the community as you can, in every aspect of it, in your religious aspect, in your schools, in your politics, in community services, anything you can do to get involved in the community, make yourself heard, be a part of it. And we're going to rub elbows, and there's going to be some unhappy folks, there's going to be some hurt feelings, but I think we're all big kids. We've all lived through this before. Put aside your feelings, go forward, and we can have the best community, and we can have a showcase for the world to look at.
Hi. I'm not quite as scripted, well, I'm more scripted than the other people, but my name is Donnis Chow, and I'm a senior at Cupertino High School. It's important for you to know that I haven't lived my whole life in Cupertino. I came here to America when I was four, and I moved around a lot after that. I lived on the east coast for a lot of my life because my parents were hunting around for a job. They finally found the jobs they liked, teaching at Deans and San Jose State University. And we stayed in part because of the strong Asian presence in the community and because of the good weather and the great schools. I guess something that I'll always remember from my childhood are the times I spent in Chinese school, not very happy times for me. But my parents tell me when I was four, I was fluent in Cantonese, and I lost the ability to speak Cantonese, living on the east coast, because there was no one to talk to. They did send me to Chinese school, but they taught me in Mandarin, and I never spoke Mandarin before, so I really didn't get much out of it. Happily, here, they have Chinese school in Cantonese and Mandarin, and I spent a lot of Friday nights there. Now, this place is unique because cultures from all over the world can come and mingle to produce a new perspective on life. Every Sunday, my family, we go out to eat at Chinese dim sum. We order in Cantonese, we read the menus in Chinese, and we read the Chinese newspaper together. It's really quite unique. I mean, when I was back on the east coast, some people's idea of Chinese food was chopsticks and chop suey. Now, there is no community support for minorities back there. First of all, there was almost no population to support a community. Speaking as a Chinese-American, just beginning to discover its cultural heritage, I find multiculturalism a source of strength. I can see the world through this lens, and it gives me a wider perspective. As a student, I tend to take it, take it for granted because I see it almost every day. Back in the seventh grade, I experienced a great change in demographics of my friendships. When I lived in Florida, most of my friends were Caucasian or white simply because I was the only Asian in town. But here, the great majority of my friends are Asian. Even today, high school friendships are organized into cliques based on lines of cultural and ethnic differences. But I don't see this as a problem or as a sign of tension. People hang out where they tend to feel the most comfortable. I hear stories from other high schools where this has become a problem, where physical conflict has become a problem. But for me, these are only rumors. I'm on a water polo team, and it's mostly Caucasian, and I'd feel equally comfortable hanging out with them and my Asian friends. I must admit that I do feel a little limited in the scope of the things that I can say because I've been mostly concerned with my Chinese-American heritage and with diversity later. The few glimpses that I've had into other cultures provide me with a fascinating view into other points of, into other ways of living. But they don't really register that much because they're not really that connected to me. Certainly, I think it's very important for people to learn about their culture, cultural heritage. And as I think, and as the diversity of the city, excuse me, as diversity increases, I think the younger people in the city will come to recognize this diversity as something that's almost natural. A culture becomes something that's just another part of a person's background, something that makes that individual unique. It's important for people to continue to celebrate the cultural heritage because it gives people a place, it allows people to know where they stand in terms of others.
From senior to a senior citizen, an idea that I'm still trying to get used to. My name is Dale Compton, and I came to live in the Santa Clara Valley in 1953 and moved to Cupertino in 1971. I immigrated to Cupertino from Sunnyvale. We came here-- We came here, of course, because we had young children, we wanted to come to the Cupertino schools, we wanted a slightly more rural setting, and by that I meant a larger backyard, and I wanted a reasonable commute to work. And I found all of those things here in Cupertino, plus the best weather in the Bay Area and a friendly community. And at that time when I came, the ethnic range of Cupertino's population was already beginning to change. Now, I grew up in an ethnically varied community and I found it rather rewarding. In fact, I enjoyed living in a place where people of different cultural and ethnic backgrounds live. And I hardly gave it a thought. It wasn't, it wasn't something that was much in my consciousness at that point. On the other hand, in my career, I had a very strong involvement with formal equal-opportunity programs and laws and with everything that that meant in the workplace. I found much of it very distasteful and very unproductive as well. Equal opportunity is basically a system that is adversarial, a legal system, and when you have to turn to such a system to do what you know in your heart is right, there are many problems and nobody comes up very satisfied or happy. So when I retired about five years ago, I started to look around, decided to do a little community volunteering, and after a couple of false starts, ended up at the Cupertino Senior Center where I'm on duty at the desk one morning a week. There I found an opportunity to take advantage of the cultural setting that we have here, the richness that we have in our community. And together with several others at the Senior Center, we formed a group to look at what the Senior Center should do to serve our citizenry in all its variations. At first, we just talked, but then we decided we wanted to be active. And so let me read my, our mission statement to you. Our mission is to assist the Cupertino Senior Center to provide opportunities for all nearby seniors regardless of their countries of origin or their language capabilities, to participate and enjoy the Cupertino Senior Center and its programs, and to foster a sense of shared community through this participation. Now, that's not a succinct mission statement as I'd like, but I think it is clear. It's a statement of inclusion, it's a statement of friendliness, and it's a statement of building positive connections among people. The group that I chair there has concentrated on common denominators among peoples. Music, dance, fashion, family relationships are examples, and we've sponsored several events at the Senior Center with what I think is good success. We've tried to interest one or more of the ethnic pockets of our community with each program, and we always provide an opportunity for social interaction afterwards. I think we're building understanding and lowering barriers among our population of seniors. I've had lots of good feedback about our events. And for me, the lesson is as simple as the events themselves have been. I think a community can make progress on almost any front by accentuating the positive and taking action rather than by just talking. And I thank you very much.
My name is Zahra Pavlovich. My family and I moved to the Bay Area from Austin, Texas about 10 years ago. Like many other parents of school-aged children, one of our main concerns when we moved was our children's education. Because of the outstanding reputation of the Cupertino School District, we chose this community as our home. My children's school was where I eventually met many of the people who now form my network of friends. Initially, I was really amazed at the diversity of this community. My children's school resembled a mini United Nations. I had never before been a part of such a diverse community. My children's best friends were French and Chinese, American and German, Japanese and Pakistani, and the list goes on. In the beginning, I was very much aware of this diversity. Something interesting happened, however, as I became increasingly involved in school activities. I realized after a while that when I was working with a group of very committed parents who volunteered endless hours to enrich the lives of all the students, that my focus really wasn't on the diversity anymore. We were all united in reaching the same goals. We all loved our children and wanted the best for them. We were all connected by this love of family and community. We were too busy grading papers, baking cupcakes, planning next year's budget and future fundraisers. We were too busy bringing our knowledge about history and architecture and even bubble science to our children. We were too busy planning Red Ribbon Week, which is, as some of you might know, the drug awareness program, and making earthquake safety packets for the children. In short, we were too busy being a caring community to focus on our differences. We also took time out occasionally to celebrate everybody's heritage on International Night. This was our chance to show off our culture and learn a little something about other people. We tasted different foods and watched dances from around the world. We saw beautiful costumes from many lands that our children put on when they went on parade. And everyone took great interest in the carefully laid-out boots which displayed such interesting items as decorated eggs from Russia, leather goods from Argentina, and cowboy boots and football helmets from the U.S. While the community and the school district have had their ups and downs through the years regarding issues such as, let's say, Mandarin immersion or the establishment of middle schools, it's really my firm belief that for the most part, if we all care for the future of our children and this community, we can put unity ahead of conflict. As long as we're willing to communicate, we can resolve most problems that arise among us. So I welcome you to this forum where I hope we continue this tradition of open communication and civic involvement. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Divya Thalagia and I'm currently attending Deans College. I came to the United States of America in 1996. One of the main reasons why my family and I decided to come to the U.S. from India was from education. Coming to this country was a big decision for my family and me. I was unprepared for the change in lifestyle and especially living behind our lives and starting all over again. But it was not as hard as I'd expected it to be. Cupertino's natural beauty and its people made me feel comfortable. The schools challenged me to do my best at everything. The teachers here helped me to realize my potential and gave me a direction to my future. I made new friends from different cultures. I enjoyed learning about them, their culture, the language, and their food. I had never been around people of so many different races and ethnic backgrounds at the same time. I felt blessed. Living in Cupertino is like living in a melting pot of all the cultures that one could think of. Cupertino is also an integral part of the Silicon Valley, which provides us with so many different opportunities. You get exposed to the best technology in the world. Coming to the U.S. was a whole new start for me. Meeting people and learning about them was like an adventure. But there was just one problem. I saw that various ethnic groups separated people. In school, I found divisions among students because of the language and the country they came from. This bothered me a lot because I, because of this, I felt restrained and I was not able to go and talk to people because we did not share the same language. I felt uncomfortable and not included in certain groups of people who did not speak English. This creates a wall of separation and it holds us back from sharing our views and ideas and creates tension among groups. I believe that we have a lot to learn from each other, which helps us in the development of our own full personalities and advancement towards our own goals. I know that many of us come here who do not know English. But I, as a result, I think that the city of Cupertino should come up with programs which would involve the whole family and would provide basic training in English so that people can easily convey their thoughts and ideas to whoever, to whoever they want that's creating a common bond. Life in Cupertino changes every day. It brings new adventures and new challenges, and I'm very proud to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Divya, Divya. When we, when the Five Seas was putting this together, the idea here was to bring multiple voices up here on the stage, and I think they succeeded quite well in doing that tonight. We're now going to turn this over to you and give you a chance, you've been listening so patiently, and to give you a chance to talk about what you've heard here and to reflect on the experiences of the presenters on the stage here. And your facilitators at the table have some questions for you, and they will walk you through an introduction activity and through those questions. And enjoy yourself, have a good conversation, listening and speaking. I'm going to keep tight time limits since we got a late start here tonight. So I'm going to give you all 20 minutes to have a, an enriching conversation, and I'll give you a couple-minute heads, heads up when we get close to the 20-minute timeframe. Have a good conversation.
If you have anything that, that really hit you and that provoked some thoughts, please?
I'm an educator, and so I was most interested in the last speaker, the girl from India. And I thought when she was talking about a basic education in English for new families here, it would be something I would be interested in participating in.
Oh, a volunteer.
Very honorable role for Cupertino, for our community, to become a showcase of how we can work together. Because the whole world is gonna be struggling with what we're struggling with. And it's becoming a smaller place, so if we can be a role model, a showcase, then, then I think it'll benefit not only our community, but other communities too.
In essence, we should put Cupertino on the map.
Right. Right.
The way things are or used to be is the way they always were. Really, everything is a wave of change, and what was the status quo at one particular time was changed by someone else who came in, creating a new status quo. I think it's important that we always look at the fact that things were never exactly the way we think they were. They were always in a state of change, and it's always, what makes it better is the fact that something new comes in to re-energize us and rethink what it is we're all about and allows us to move forward in positive ways and build upon what was here already. And I really thought Steve did a good job of showing that with humor and in a different, beyond cultures and beyond, you know, ethnicity and things.
Sometimes I look back on the good old days. I don't think they were that good. I mean, I can think of a lot of things that have changed, you know, that have been for the better.
But I am 56, I am American, and I have to respect the place where I live. And I try to, most of them friends are Americans, native Americans, because I have to teach my daughter that. If I stay only with Colombians, I need to go back to Colombia.
Sign. So we're ready to move into the, to the second segment of the, the program tonight, which is about projects and programs ongoing in Cupertino that are dealing with multiculturalism and the demographic changes in the community. And so we have four presenters here who will, who will share their projects and programs with you. The first will be Bree Fowler, who's a student at Cupertino High School.
My name is Brianna Fowler and I'm currently a student at Cupertino High School. I've been working with the Public Dialogue Consortium for a number of years now. And well, to give you a brief background on what we've been doing, a few years ago, the Public Dialogue Consortium came to Cupertino High School inquiring as to whether their services could be used as a means of opening up dialogue amongst the students and the rest of the high school community. They facilitated group discussions using a topic guideline of the expected school-wide learning results, ESSLERS in short, which basically entailed what a student should know or be able to do by the end of their high school career. The topic was derived from concerns brought up by teachers and administrators, and the questions they manifested dealt with the amount of students who understood the ESSLERS and what they felt about what was expected of them. Primarily, the concern was voiced that many students aren't taught about what these expectations were and they don't really see their validity in everyday class assignments. Pleased with the results, Cupertino sought to complete the process, eventually coming upon action plans. During this process, students who showed interest were trained to become facilitators themselves, then giving the students a chance to carry on the process. Every time a new concern arose, the students, along with the PDC, would facilitate a new session, thus continuing the process to the present. From a more personal standpoint, I've been working with the PDC since my freshman year and I've been involved with Cupertino Project for the duration of it. After the first facilitation, which was done mostly by college students, I attended a training to become a facilitator myself. For this, I had to sort of trade in my voice for a neutral role, but it's been very exciting to help open up dialogue amongst the students and administrators at Cupertino High School because I think it, it gives the students a chance to feel they've truly been heard and that their ideas are gonna have an impact on the way things are gonna happen at their school. At the last facilitation in June, all the schools from Fremont High School District sent representatives to discuss school climate and safety issues. From that, it was established that at that time, multiculturalism was, you know, among the least of the students' concerns, which was definitely good to hear. Current issues we've also been working with include student-teacher relationships, school climate, and safety. With the local junior high, we have been planning to begin the very same process that we've been working with at Cupertino. And we're gonna begin with a general session from there, having Cupertino High School students train the junior high students to become facilitators themselves. I think it's very important for the students to be able to be heard. And by introducing the concerns into a neutral environment, it takes away the judgment students fear with, you know, voicing their opinion like anything else. It's, it's really scary for a student to go up and have the courage to say, you know, hey, this is me and I really have an opinion here. This is something that's gonna affect me and, and I really wanna have a say in how it's gonna go. It just, I really, I, I like to emphasize that it's, you know, a wonderful way for the students to get involved and actually be able to say something about what's going on. And I really hope for the process to continue long after I graduate. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pepe. I'm one of those few lucky ones. I work and live in Cupertino. I feel very blessed. The increase of Asian population in the last 10 to 15 years was a result of the Asian families being drawn to this area as a result of the great schools we have. The founders of APA recognized the need to bridge the gaps between the Asian community and the mainstream community, and also to help support these parents to get involved in the schools and help their children excel. APA's goal is always to encourage its members to get involved in the schools and in the community. There may be a misconception that APA is an Asian PTA. It is not. APA encourages its members to help in the classrooms, to join the school PTAs, to join the school side councils, and to attend the district school meetings so that they are informed and involved. APA members support districts in multiple ways. In 1998, APA established the Asian American Teacher Scholarship, which identified and recognized the outstanding Asian American college students who have chosen teaching as a profession. By doing this, APA wants to encourage more Asian American students to commit to this very rewarding career. To date, APA has given out seven scholarships at $1,000 each. We are happy to report that four out of the seven recipients have joined our districts as teachers. One of APA's missions is to advance better understanding between the mainstream community and the Asian American community. In December 1998, APA hosted a holiday dinner for the ELD students and their families from the Cupertino School District and the Fremont Union High School District. These recent immigrant families were invited to, to celebrate and experience one of the America's most significant, significant cultural event, the Thanksgiving and the Christmas holidays. The highlight of the evening was when we recognized the countries that these families represented. They were from Cambodia, China, France, Germany, Hong Kong, India, Israel, Japan, Korea, Malaysia, Mexico, Russia, Singapore, Taiwan, Turkey, Vietnam, and South Africa. Over 320 people representing more than 17 countries under one roof. This surely tells about our community and our school districts. APA recognized the significance to raise the awareness for diversity. Without the awareness, the dialogue related to racial and ethnic differences may be difficult. We need to learn to develop effective strategies to overcome misunderstandings and differences. In February of 1998, with the tireless effort from Dr. Yunin Chen, APA co-sponsored the Diversity Forum for the leaders in the community. The forum was presented by Dr. Darryl Su, who is the renowned panelist for President Clinton's Advisory Council of the Race Initiatives. The goal of the forum was to help educators, parents, students, and the leaders in the community to begin a process of multicultural awareness. It was It was recognized that awareness is a top-down process, that the leaders of the community need to have the vision and take the initiatives to begin the awareness of diversity, to start the process and lead by example. This effort later led to the creation of the Inter-Agency Multicultural Collaborative. APA will continue our role to be the bridge for the community, to help promote understanding and continue to encourage our members to get involved. This is a great community, and we are very fortunate to be surrounded by all these different cultures. Diversity is a wonderful thing. If we were all the same, then life would be very dull. The fact that there are differences is interesting, and we can learn so much from each other, young and old, newcomers and longtime residents, high-tech and low-tech, analog and digital, you name it, Cupertino has it. That's what makes this community so unique and so great, and that we all love it so much. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Bill Bragg. I'm the superintendent of the school district, and it's my privilege this evening to share with you some of our thoughts about the collaborative. The Cupertino Multicultural Inter-Agency Collaborative is truly a community-wide effort, and it's committed to working together in positive ways. And as Pepe mentioned, the collaborative had its beginnings in an interactive forum that featured Dr. Darryl Wing Su. This was a forum that was sponsored by APA, and the title of it was Building a Positive School Climate for Multiculturalism. And it brought together city, community, business, educational leaders with a common interest, and that is to improve our community. And out of this came the collaborative, which was made up of the following agencies: the Cupertino Union School District, the Fremont Union High School District, Deansa College, the City of Cupertino, the Asian American Parent Association, and the Five Cs. And our first collaborative meeting was held in September of 1998, and it was an opportunity for each of the agencies to share a number of things they were doing in this area, but most importantly, it was an opportunity to begin to define exactly what the collaborative was about, what it wanted to do. And out of this came a definition for multiculturalism in Cupertino. And that definition states that Cupertino is committed to becoming a model multicultural community in the 21st century, who appreciates and respects the complexity and richness of our community, and it has a powerful set of core values, which involve understanding differences in ways that promote unity, not separatism, that promotes inclusion, cooperation, movement, and movement toward mutually shared goals. That it respects the unique characteristics of the individuals, respects the commonalities among culturally diverse groups, respects all aspects of who we are, race, class, gender, ethnicity, religion, and national origin. Most importantly, it recognizes that conflict and disagreement, as well as collaboration and consensus, are essential parts of a rich dialogue, and they're necessary to achieve the goals of a culturally rich community, and that an action plan developed to influence behaviors and organizational structure is necessary to nurture the common good, integrate the positive contributions of all the members. Well, with this definition as a guiding principle, the collaborative has continued with its work, and it meets twice a year. Each meeting is an opportunity to share information and to look at how to better use our resources to meet our goals. Some of the things we've been focusing on recruitment and training. Current focus of the collaborative is on staff training and developing Multicultural Opportunities pamphlet. And this is a pamphlet that describes various activities, workshops, classes, and additional resources that are available to members of our organization, members of the high school, members of the city, and ultimately, members of the community as well. Most importantly, the collaborative provides a process and a mechanism to continue to seek ways to better work together, to reinforce and expand the cultural richness that is the foundation of this community's success. Thank you.
I mentioned that the Five Cs was formed to implement the ideas that were produced at that two-day leadership workshop. Some of the projects we have engaged in have been completed, and some are ongoing. One of the completed projects was mentioned earlier by Don Brown, and that is the Block Party Guidelines. Our committee put together this brochure. We think that block parties are a great way for neighbors to get to know each other, but it's difficult to know how to organize one. So we have gathered all the information you need to know, such as what permits are required, how to get them, suggestions as to how to contact Parks and Rec to get someone to come organize children's games, and we put all of this in one easy-to-use brochure. You can even request a fire engine or a police vehicle to show up at your block party. We want to welcome, we want to welcome new residents and make them feel part of the community, so we have created a reference that we send out to them with phone numbers that they are going to need. They also get a refrigerator magnet with some of these phone numbers, and a booklet with all of the city offices and their phone numbers. This goes out to all new residents. Another completed task is the database of neighborhood leaders. And then there are several projects that are ongoing. Town meetings are something we plan to continue to hold. This one is the third one we have sponsored. At the first one, the participants developed the strategies for implementing the action items that we came up with at that very first training session. At the second town meeting, we discussed some hot topics, such as business signs in Chinese, Mandarin English immersion classes, and Fourth of July celebrations. And we developed guidelines on public communication, what are good ways to talk about these issues. A project that is partially completed and also is still in progress is the Diversity Journal. This is a video series produced in conjunction with the Cable TV Commission. We have completed one video, which has been shown on the government and access channels and is available in the library. Another video is nearing completion, and I think there will be more in the future. Another ongoing project is our facilitation training. You're experiencing the results of that tonight. We have a lot of people here who have been trained by the Public Dialogue Consortium to facilitate these meetings. We're able to serve as facilitators and recorders of group discussions. Members receive training in intercultural skills at every meeting. Members of our group are those, are people who work professionally as trainers, and they have been kind enough to present that training to us at our meetings. Right now, we're in the middle of a strategic planning process to determine how we want to be structured and set our goals for the future. We welcome anyone who would like to join us. We meet on the first Wednesday of the month from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at City Hall in the downstairs conference room. Please be sure to leave your name and address on the sheet in the, in your packet. If you've opened up your packet, on the left-hand side, there's a place for your name and address. If we get that, we'll send you notices of our meetings. We also are going to do a summary of tonight's meeting, and we'll mail that out to everyone who gives us their name and address. And I'll talk about the rest of the packet at the end of the meeting. Now I'm going to turn it back to Sean, who will tell us what we're doing next.
Thank you, Roberta. Just before we move into this, we set up 15 tables tonight, and that was sort of an ambitious number, we thought, and all 15 tables are full, and my informal count indicates that we have over 130 participants here tonight, so I think that's really fantastic. As we move into the next segment, we're very interested, all the participants up here, the Five Cs and the city, are very interested to hear your thoughts on the projects and programs that are ongoing in the city. And so this is an evaluation step, and the discussions that'll take place at your tables are really about evaluating the programs that are ongoing and helping to decide what the next steps will be. Your facilitators will lead you through that, and the recorders will take wonderful, accurate, and clearly legible notes, so that we can summarize those and feed those back to you. Again, have a good conversation.
It needs all these programs, and even all these speakers that I heard just now. They are, I haven't felt the impact of that one so far.
I didn't use their brochure. I wasn't given that from the city. I was given a different set of papers, but it's a wonderful way of getting your names together, and everybody gets to know each other.
Thank you.
In the corner, there was a Chinese family was being there, and we didn't completely know they were there. And when they were, they were so scared, woman was so scared, she was just sitting on the front lawn.
It wasn't like, you know, truth or disem, you know, stereotypes were in place. It was really good.
So it broke down stereotypes about groups that was outside.
Yeah, exactly. It was like the Chinese, like, and then they said, like, all the bad stuff about their names, like, we heard. And then they came in, and they read these, you know, they said how they felt. And then, yeah, and then everyone, you know, saw these people crying because of these words. And I mean, we realized the magnitude of racism and prejudice.
Typically, you think that racism was a problem back in the day, and you don't really think that it's a problem now, but when we went through that exercise, we realized that racism and stereotypes were still a problem, and it's still existing now, and it's just a problem.
How did this exercise come about?
It was epic.
Okay, everyone, speaking from Group One, we came up with a lot of ideas of things that we thought Cupertino was doing very well, and also some suggestions for improvement. One of the areas that we wanted to address was the communication barrier between different cultures in Cupertino, whether that be some sort of a, the Five Cs bringing everyone together, having volunteers from the community talk to the new people coming into the community to help them find out what they need, so that we can create a more cohesive environment. Secondly, we were all in agreement with the importance of schools, investigation into schools and why some of these issues with certain populations in the school being separated and bringing everybody together.
Okay, real quickly, our group spoke of a lot of things, but the key thing that came up more than one time was that we felt that having specific ethnic events, such as the Chinese Lunar New Year or the Iranian Cultural Festival, was very good, but we also felt that it was very important to have more multicultural events, which were not specific to an ethnic group. And one of the steps to move forward was presented was to have an international fair with all the different cultures coming together, and also having multicultural or diversity series, where you kind of cover a lot of different groups. And that's it.
Our group was really taken by the suggestion that language is a barrier that separates groups, and talked about the importance of individuals having enough initiative to transcend that barrier, and also talked about some ideas of having events that did not require language, that would bring people together. The second headline would be that the group was very taken by the report of the AAPA's activities as a citizens group that is working to bring together other groups.
Our group was very taken with the fact that so much has been done by the city and the community groups and the citizens of the city in a proactive manner to bring about even a discussion like the one that we're having here, which has brought up a list of topics that we had, and communication being the end result of that topic. And we had two things, A, the proactiveness of the city in getting us here, and B, that we need more communication of the programs, of the meetings like this, of what's happening in the community, so that everyone can get on board for the entire program.
Okay, my group was generally impressed with all the steps that our city's taking to promote multiculturalism, including the, they were very impressed with the PDC's involvement in the high schools and getting students talking to each other, and the block party brochures, making block parties seem easy. Our second headline would be that the city needs to start reaching out to more people. As, if you noticed, that this meeting is everybody coming here, but they suggested having speakers go to maybe community service groups, or just any other kind of community groups, get more people involved, and, yeah, that's basically it. They also wanted more, jumping off of the other group, they wanted more multicultural events, like a fair or that kind of thing.
Some similar themes at Table Seven. There was confidence in the leadership of the community that we're moving in the right direction. As far as next steps, there was an expression to move beyond polite conversation and dialogue, and as the term evolved in our group, cross the bridge, meaning that those who have experienced integration, assimilation, reach out to those who are newly arrived and going through that. Also suggested that one of the tasks for the Five Cs leadership would be to reach out to the neighborhood level and provide a dialogue in that sense. And finally, that communication is not just language, it's also understanding culture. One final thought that I didn't write down is that Table Number Seven has felt for years that the Cupertino Director of Parks and Recreation is underpaid. They ask me to ask you that when you leave tonight, cash donation at the table. Thank you very much.
Hi, Table Number Twelve was very concerned about the language barrier issues that go, and the issues that go with the language barrier, so they really wanted to see that dealt with. They were basically pretty pleased about the things that were done so far, but they would like more promotion of this, so we'd like to see more of this, you know, more of the flyers hanging around the city, and so that everybody could find out and attend meetings like this. And I think one of the things that they would like to see in the future is a town hall meeting that deals with issues that go beyond multiculturalism, issues like road repair and things that we all think about all the time, but we never have a chance to say, you know, we don't have a forum in which to speak about it. So they felt pretty strongly that in the future, maybe we should have a forum to address those issues. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Susan Fazere. We have seven students here from Homestead High School. It's called All Shades of Colors. They're all wearing our shirts. We're a brand-new multicultural club, and we're also very concerned with multiculturalism in our community, and we're here to learn more about it. And our school is basically trying to make things more inclusive and try and spread awareness, just like you guys are doing. However, we also had some concerns that we need to have more programs that promote cultural awareness, like fairs, different international night, like you guys spoke of before, and just things to raise awareness and make our community more inclusive. And that's exactly what our club is trying to do. And we'd also like administration to help us with this, because we felt that our school hasn't done all it could to help us out with our club, and we're kind of struggling with this. I mean, we have all these ideas, and we have really strong feelings about multiculturalism, but we're not getting the support we need from administration or adults, so, or the school board, so we need help from that. I don't mean to criticize you guys, but that's kind of the truth. I don't know if you guys heard of Camp Anytown, but our school went there October, and it's a high school program that teaches how you, how to make an inclusive community. And we had to push really hard to go there, and we didn't get any help from administration. So little things like that really disturbed me, so we'd just like to see more help from administration and the adults at our school. But it's great that we're doing a lot in this community for multiculturalism. Thank you.
I'm doing the second part. I'm also one of the representative of... I'm also one of the representative of APA, and we have been asking for more multiculturalism in our school district, and they have been going backwards and now backwards or forwards again, but we feel that they have to do more. And especially, we have comparison between different school districts, and we rate Fremont Union High School District highly, but I hope CUSD can do more, because they used to have the more cultural event than they have less, and they used to have a multicultural director or coordinator. They don't have the position anymore. So I hope, and also some kind of staff training, and they said they don't have the time, so I wish, I mean, we actually talk a lot, and we have the same, well, same concerns. So thank you for listening to us.
Group Eleven said that they thought the city had excellent programs, but we need to do more marketing of those programs, especially to groups that maybe haven't embraced multiculturalism, which is not the people here in this room. So maybe senior population or other areas that are more homebound or don't get out as much. And then we changed the conversation to fun and food, so we felt if you can get international fairs or other events around those two subject areas, we'll get people to come out, and the more people are educated and share food from different cultures, dances, et cetera, the more they'll be able to work together and play together in their community.
Hi, I'm Jeff Mo, speaking for Table Fourteen. The two main points that we came up with were, one, that the community is doing a wonderful job. I think we're moving in, we all think we're moving in that direction of becoming the showplace community that will benefit more than just us, but be an example to other communities too. And so we all feel proud to belong to this community, and this event right now is a testament, this dialogue, this sharing, this discussion, to the strength that we have in our community. Second point is, but let's not stop. You know, we still have a lot of long ways to go, a lot more we can do. One suggestion is to get businesses more active and involved in this effort to, this diversity and multicultural effort, to understand and to grow in that area. Seems like we don't have everybody participating here, and in marketing, we've heard a couple other places, is another way that publicity, publicize our goals and get more people involved. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darshana Nattkarni, and the recommendations, first of all, our group also is very impressed with the programs that we have in diversity. We also felt that we need to embrace it, not just at a conceptual level, but emotional level as well. Schools, some recommendation for schools, that schools can have lead teachers on diversity, diversity liaison persons, perhaps programs, after-school programs to kids for learning other languages. Religious organizations can be more open and inclusive, and a very, very strong recommendation emerged from our group for the businesses. There was a concern that businesses are not as sensitive, and they need to incorporate diversity training or something of that sort, and understand that it's not just a good thing to do, but it is also, it's good for the business, bottom-line reasons. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Laura Demondinley, reporting for Table Number Ten. Our group felt that there will always be extreme views in the community, one way or the other, but there is a majority of people that are in the middle, that genuinely want to do something, and the catch is how to get them involved. So we tried to get that out. Some of the things that we discussed is possibly more educational opportunities, more forums. The videos were good, maybe more involvement in festivals and celebrations, and there's mention of maybe even a possibility of a tour for Cupertino Village to promote some understanding. There's also a mention about outreach of current programs that needs to be promoted more so, and ways that we can do that is possibly to identify some of the bridges in the community, people that are familiar with a couple of different cultures, and people respected in both cultures. One final thing would be that we need to have more meaningful interactions, not just a superficial level, but we're making a good stab at it now, but we need to dig deeper. Thanks.
I think that was more than two. I think there's a penalty. You have to give Steve Dowling more money, the former director of Parks and Recreation. Table Nine had a great discussion. There's sort of a trend going here. We like the idea of multicultural activity, a festival, and we said, you know, don't start from scratch, there's already a bunch of stuff going on, like the school site, International Days, just about every school site has an International Day. There's even a United Nations Day, that maybe we could figure out how to work it around that. And then, and we thought it was also very important to have American and European traditions represented in that, so that we're recognizing that we're all part of this great group here. And I think those are the main points that we had. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Smith, speaking for Table Five. You're going to hear the same themes from us. Our group was very impressed with what the city and the school districts and APA and all of the other groups have done so far, but they were surprised to hear about some of those things. And so we feel that that information needs to be publicized much better, maybe in other news media with different languages, different ways of outreach into the community. The other problem was that there are serious language barriers, and maybe one of the solutions to that would be to provide English classes to students and adults at a time that they can fit into their busy schedule. It's the same things that you've been hearing from all of the groups, we just need to do a better job of marketing ourselves, publicizing the events, and keeping the outreach going.
The real advantage of being last is you can just say ditto to everything that's been said, and it's exactly what happened in our group, Table Six, is they were very, very impressed with the speakers and the programs, and for some of us at the table said, this is the first time I've heard of all these good programs. So I think one of the things that needs to be done is really get this thing out to the rest of the folks, tell them what you're doing, because there's some really great stuff that's happening, and not too many people know that this stuff is going on right now. Need to communicate, then, these programs out to the greater group through different organizations, publish it through the scene, newspapers, Chinese newspapers, whatever you can do to get the word out, is, I think, is really important. One of the things that the table indicated, other point, was that there's so many different cultural differences, there's laws that they need to learn on what's right, what's wrong when you come over in this country. So if there is a way of being able to do some kind of a education as to these differences, that'd be very helpful for people that come to Cupertino. And they felt Cupertino's high property values are also starting a way to be selective, and so that was very important, and try to bring out some of those and try to focus into those areas.
Yeah, I think there are some groups in the middle that had a chance. Did every group get to report?
I think that was the last one.
Oh, wonderful, fantastic. Thank you.
Yes, it's been a wonderful evening. I think the Five Cs have their marching orders here. Be assured, we're going to take all of these flip charts, we're going to read them all, we're going to transcribe them all, we will deal with them, and we invite you to come and help us with these tasks that we're going to be taking on. Thank you again for coming. Good night.[1781.22]